Prepared meeting in the new planning board. Thanks for meeting us here tonight because voting was of course occurring in Whipple. Just a quick reminder that everybody that we're being recorded. And. That this will be available to view later on the site. I'm going to table the minutes for now, and I will ask if there is a public comment for something that's not on our agenda today. If anybody has something in some of these. Okay, great. And because we're in a different venue tonight, just a reminder, we've been here in the past, but if when you do want to talk, please come to the mic in the front and just. State your name as we always do it that way. I want two mics actually, then that we can hear you and keep you recorded. Okay, so we're going to continue the public hearing that we started at our last meeting. We're going to talk about cluster subdivision and the focus of tonight. For those of you who were in our last meeting, we talked about some changes to things and like the comments tonight to can really confine to the changes that were made from our last meeting to this meeting. Because we we feel like we gave proper. Air to the concerns that folks had at the last meeting until in order to. Expedite things tonight, we'd like to have the comments kind of focus on the changes again from the last meeting to this meeting. So. We want to talk.
You want me to summarize?
Yeah, you want. Thanks.
Sure. So also, just so everyone is under. Understands what the process is. So this is the final public hearing. So the board does not have the ability to make any substantive changes at this point. The product that comes out of tonight's meeting is whether or not they vote to move these amendments forward to the ballot in March or not. So there there can't be any more changes made of a substantive variety. So the the first one that was left open ended that we made a change at the last meeting is in the cluster section. And the change was regarding the buffer strip, which we initially proposed reducing all the buffer strips to fifty feet. And through the discussion in the public comment last week, we left the conservation, the agricultural residential and R two. At a hundred and then made a more appropriate fifty foot in the R one where the lot sizes are obviously much smaller than the other zones. So that is a summary. It's in two different places.
Sure.
Can you point out what number and page and all that stuff that's in?
Yep, so right up here on the screen. It's in these two spots on the second page of the package. And just to also put this out so that the recording will not be quite the same here as it is at Whipple Hall here. Things are recorded via Zoom and. It's a little bit different. So if you watch the recording later, it will be mainly an audio recording. Unless I can figure out how to share my screen, which I'm trying to. All right, I think that always gets that on.
Yes, great. Okay, thanks, Adam. Are there questions from the board on the what Adam just went through from the last meeting to this meeting?
I should also just remind it did not change from meeting to meeting, but the the elimination of the minimum lot size at five acres.
Yeah, that's better than I said. Thank you. And the numbering doesn't matter, right?
No numbering, even numbering, once you get it in, you can actually chain make those changes.
I guess. Thanks. Anything else from the board? Okay, are there questions or comments from the public on this first? Item around cluster subdivisions?
And if there are, and you have to use the microphone, I think you have to just toggle it on and off.
Yeah. Okay, so. Nothing else on clusters from either the public or from the board. So from the board, then we didn't mean a motion to move this to the warrant.
You'll move?
Same. All in favor? Any opposed or seen? Thank you. Okay, so next step, we're going to talk about PUD planned unit development. Adam will walk through a summary of this one as well.
So this is a very similar. Amendment as the last one, the five acre minimum elimination did not change from the last one to this one. We did leave the density buffer as it. Exists in here. Streamlined it to eliminate the second. Stating of what that buffer is leaving this one and then eliminating where it restates it in the next one. And then the change came in the section regarding the water and sewer service after the discussion from the last meeting. So that it would read that sewer service, all planned unit development shall be served by the New London sewer for sewage disposal when the development is within one hundred feet of the sewer system. Which mirrors the state law. And I think that was the only other change there.
Okay, thanks, Adam, for that. Are there questions or comments from the board on this from the last time?
Somebody raised this would be. Somebody raised this would be today. I just have a question. I think for Adam. Or we could take it to the point where there was a limitation on hookups. Would a waiver of a hundred feet? Go to the.
CBA. Correct, it would really be the same process that continuum had to go through last summer for the the water side of things and the CBA granted them a variance.
Great, thanks, Paul. And any other questions from the board? Comments? Okay, from the public then, are there questions or comments on this one? Your PUD. Please, Steve, come on up if you went to one of the mice and just to make sure it's on. They're they're on the side. Thank you. I think you get to flip it on. There should be a switch on top, I think.
I think it's right under the little screen, Steve.
Got it.
There you go.
What is the build out effect of the change in this provision, limiting the water hookup? And changes the sewer, the confinement of within a hundred feet?
So I would say from the water. There's not necessarily a build out change because as we went through the summer, we would be obligated to. Provide a variance if they were not able to accommodate. So I would guess that even if something were outside of that. That water service, if it's still in the water precinct and in the PUD. The water precinct would be telling that applicant the same thing that they can't provide the water. So we would be in a. You know, an even field there. Let me see if I can pull up the map and show. Bear with me, just turning off all the layers to make this a little bit easier to look at. So this red area that you see here is the planned unit overlay district. So those are the. Sorry, that one's. Focuses it gets a little harder to see, but those are the boundaries for the extent of the planned unit. And then we also have. Just recently mapped the so then you see the hydrants on here are all of the areas where there's sewer mains. So the messer property and. The areas along. Morgan Hill. Are areas that don't have sewers. So obviously, there is some potential ability there that. Areas that are not within a hundred feet. Obviously, a couple of these lots are now conserved. So there are smaller lots in here that. Now being less than five acres, they're not concerned and could potentially. Have more build out. I'm not sure that each parcel has enough land to have more than a single unit. But bear with me while I find where we hid the. Water precinct boundaries. Slow to refocus. There we go. So the the PUD falls wholly within the the water precinct. So I think it's probably likely a wash as far as the water precinct goes, because they would be in the same scenario and the variance would be granted. And then with the sewer, I do think there is this area where it could be a change. That being said. Two acres zoning there. That's less than a. Two acres. You wouldn't get any additional units there. And these are all less than two acres as well surrounded red surrounded by the conservation area. You know, I think these are all within sewer extension feasibility. As it exists.
It looks like a hundred feet.
Steve, speak into the mic, please.
Sorry, I thought the sewers dumped out the old paper road behind Tommy's. Sorry, but. I thought when this development was approved in the eighties that they'd put in sewer infrastructure. They didn't. I think there was a plan to tie into where Hilltop comes in and county and take it out here before those lots were then purchased. So. And obviously, there are a couple of. Parcels in there. Could be developed as a PUD. However, it doesn't change. You don't get a density bonus. And so, you know, they could still be subdivided into two acre parcels with the same number of houses resulting. So it really shouldn't change from if someone was doing a single family on a septic on their two acres.
What about the south side of the? PUD district again, when it was the area that was served by sewer.
Believe it, maybe it's Knights Hill nature. So this is the Chrisany property, which they will be bringing sewer into that parcel for the Quinn Pines project. And then. Obviously, the the hospital parcel that where continuum is going, they will be hooking up to the sewer. Also supplying their own water. And then I believe this land is basically all Knights Hills, not out in Cloud. Now, there are a couple of random tracks out there. But again, the underlying density stays the same, so it shouldn't produce additional units. Obviously, the style of unit may be slightly different. But that ability exists today.
Thanks, Steve. Are there other comments or questions from the public?
Well, there is this infinite many distinct set of colors.
Okay, any other questions, comments from the board? All right, well, then we would need a motion to move this to the warrant. So.
Second.
Very tense.
Can we just identify so Tring is going to be doing these from recordings? So I have to make sure I get the right initials for who made the movement.
So moved Jeremy.
Jeremy, okay.
And then either Marianne or Emily second.
Emily was second.
I've got Emily's initials down. I think we're all on page.
Well, now, all in favor? I'd be opposed or anything. Thank you. Okay, so next up, we will talk about section eighteen for ADUs.
So the, excuse me, the change that was. Put into place after the last public hearing. Was really only one. Change that was modified. And that was, it formally said one attached ADU and or one detached ADU. And the proposed change was one attached ADU. Elimination of the proposed and to or detached ADU. So the net result is a single EU on your property, whether that be attached or detached. And now I believe it was the only change that resulted from that conversation.
We'll talk to, for those of you who are there at length about a lot of this, but that was the that was the key substantive change. So from the board, the questions or comments about this? Okay, so from the public, questions or comments? Yeah, if you want to take a number, can you come on up? Like, yeah, for the recording, you could save your name to that, sorry. Good morning. Yeah, thanks, Richard.
I do have concerns about the test cage. Just learning how that it can make changes. I don't realize that. So you just said it, so I already have this. Changes my thoughts on this sometimes. And then from our email, you said you had forwarded the document that you referenced. Everybody should have the document that I'll be referencing. Actually, I fit that such in. At least the sort of pertinent statements. Actually, my first question, as he didn't even bring up, but since I'm not a lawyer, but it's just kind of important. Of course, now siege eleven in this document, it's ADUs in New Hampshire, a guide for municipality, which the document seems to be. Clarifications and maybe use that advice from this office where I. In the case, the municipality may require owner, like you can say, of. Of one of the units that it does this, the municipality should consider what it means by owner. Does the owner need to be a physical person or one of three things? A member of an LLC that owns the property, the beneficiary of a revocable trust that owns the property. Or a creator in person with an interest in whatever legal benefit, for example, partnership or corporation. That owns the property when they're written. That orientation of you have, you couldn't see if this was, I didn't find this clarified. So I assume if you can change it, then. Would it? If an issue, like default happens, is that actually where it was intention intended? If you wanted the broad definition of ownership, does this?
So there was no proposed change to that section. That's the portion that's been in place since twenty sixteen.
So this this ruined definition is what you.
Right, I wasn't here in twenty sixteen, so I can't speak to what the the conversation was then, but there wasn't a change proposed to that section this time.
I would say as it's your.
Okay.
I I would say, though, that it does say the domicile of the property owner.
Okay.
Yep.
Maybe that is a good way of. Kind of dealing with that. But. Maybe more concerning was on page ten. It said municipalities may restrict ADUs from being built with manufactured housing or townhouse style units. And I don't believe this was clarified in the previous meeting. Per, I checked the habit and also checked the miniature housing. The manufactured housing is the same thing as mobile homes. So people should picture. Possibility. Of a mobile home, a used mobile home. From a trailer park. Being put into your neighbors, yeah? As the ADU. And I guess I'm concerned that. This. This, the conversation in previous meetings was cut short because it was not understood to be an option to exclude. Manufactured ones. It sounds like you can't change, but I think that. I would. I guess I won't elaborate. But. I guess I I just also concerned about ADUs in general, I mean, some of them. Sandy, you know, you've all heard, your housing is an issue nationwide, it isn't. Issue, your AD houses might just add ability for people to work. So we're up to eleven or something. There's nothing, I know people want. The workforce. There's been some questions. And two. But now, if there's something here, I should do credit to, but in the previous meeting, we learned. That we were already against tent relative to. Others in the meeting. Yeah, that would compare state in previous meeting. Number three, we already are not on the attached ADUs, because, you know, we always talk about the the ultimately couples scenario. So it's not like they're stuck. They could still. Utilize attached ADUs that would make them more attractive, but they fill out larger and three bedrooms. Number four, the expectation from previous discussions and then a detached ADU will be intensive, so a few will build it and they build it, the rent will be expensive anyway. But. The other doctor that came. It says from the master plan, the survey, the survey had fit into the master plan on page fifteen. So. I could edit out, we'll cut these, but mobile homes. Was so far dead last. In in the list of possible homes that people in New London leave. You know, should be open in our town. Number five. We often hear that the college or the hospital are examples of businesses that need staff. But both of them are side pool businesses, and the difference is important to them. They have the property to be able to go. Once they finish. Number six. It has been discussed multiple times that there will be a possible to enforce short term rentals. In being to force it, that won't happen. And or. Or we are putting neighbors in potentially contentious situations. Like we're relying on neighbors to. To rattle on your neighbors to get this, like, in forces, not the optimal way to go about this. And when I brought this up in previous meetings, I was told, I looked at them and said, I was told war is good and we can always reverse this in the future. But I'm concerned about the unlucky New Londoner who might get stuck in a fortunate situation, but. Trailer mobile home. Last one remains. I know there there was a specific survey question on detached ADUs. As kind of justification for doing detached ADUs. But for the survey to really be a fair representation for the community at this point in time. I mean, I think it should be pointed out. You know, we're now, we got five minutes behind one. Quinn finds that they are brutal. The continuum sounds like it's a good possible way to happen. I mean, all this is on top of normal growth. So we're talking about already. The fairly, they've been percentage increase to this town. I just don't understand what the rush is to now air on top of it. That's it is. I I believe that the community saw, you know, this sort of list. You know, things, pros, cons, risk assessments. You know, I don't think we're joining this panel, but would really be going to touch these. Any questions?
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate it. So you have questions on on these?
Yeah, hi, Stephen Deckel. I'm just looking through this document for the first time. And section ten, for example, on subject system. It seems very clear to me as to what the expectations are. You're telling me this is a three bedroom house or a vision, and I think it's a subject system that accommodated that way. Three bedrooms. It's a pretty large subject tank, right? It's maybe, I can't think of fifteen hundred gallon kind of system, maybe larger. Mobile homes just have that start, but this must be an additional subject system. And it's unclear to me how you're actually tracking that in this document. And I think you need some clarity in that section explaining what the subject requirements are for ADU. And if it's got to be single house or it's got to be totally separate, oh, that's going to be handled. Sanitation seems to be very small. It doesn't, it doesn't really say that how how many people are supposed to handle that, or required to use a sanitation service, or they're using the transportation and taking it to Logan. You know, down to town, not the transportation, townsman have to handle that. It's going to challenge them. And talking about permit. And here. For creation of ADU. Right? But I don't know who handles that permit and manages it, oversees it. Let's say you have noise issues. Or trash, what's your transfer station, they throw it in the backyard, and they retract it, burn it, and wildlife. Neighbors don't appreciate that. They they want to complain. It's not telling us, you know. Who who do we go to to revoke this permit? What the impact is of the permit being revoked for how long? Who is actually deciding whether a person is complaining if has merit? None of this is spelled out. It seems very patchy feeling to me for lack of a better description. And I think. You need to put that in here so we have clarity as a town to understand what an ADU is and what it's going to take to set up. And if we do have a problem. We want to be neighbors, really great. There's going to be that one bad apple in the group that if we have a problem, how how do we take care of it as a community? And do it properly. So I I think, as the person said for me, this seems a little rushed. Maybe we need to step back and think about what we have in here. Add some clarity to the document. Thank you.
So I can answer a couple of those things. So this is everything that's not in red already exists in the zoning ordinance. And has in some capacity since the early two thousands and in the the form it is now since twenty sixteen. As far as individual sewage disposal systems go, that is a state regulated process. So you have to hire a. New Hampshire licensed septic designer, and they go through the state DES Department of Environmental Services process to get that approval. And when they come to this board for a conditional use permit, the applicants must furnish those approvals from the state. And so. Say there's a three bedroom main house and a one bedroom apartment. The the form will actually say approval for a three bedroom house septic, because septic's in New Hampshire are sized on the number of bedrooms. And then it'll say additionally, one bedroom accessory apartment or two bedroom accessory apartment or studio apartment. And there's very specific parameters for what that siding is in order for them to achieve approval from the state. As far as trash and things to the transfer station, somebody in accessory dwelling is a regular resident at the town of New London. And so they are offered the same opportunity to get a transfer station sticker. They can take their trash. That's really outside of a land use boards. Prolegative, but they would have. Perhaps the landlord also offers, you know, curbside pickup, so that could also be an option. As far as the process for this, the conditional use permit process is defined in the in the ordinance and the people go through. There's an application process that they come through with the land use office and they come to this board for a conditional use permit. And the neighbors are no, excuse me, noticed. And they they have to show that their. Design meets the the standards and they have to provide the. Disposal system approvals as far as the. The enforcement of that, if you have a noise issue or a health issue, there's sort of different departments. So the health office, actually, the the health officer. Deals with problems when there's been trash and that. It doesn't happen very frequently, but there are, you know, two or three times in the seven years that I've been working in the town when the health officer has had to go to. has had to go to individual properties and deal with trash. And so that's something that that would take into account if there were health and welfare concerns. From a noise disturbance concern, New London actually doesn't have a noise ordinance. So it falls to the police department for the RSAs that are typical for disturbing the peace. And I certainly can't quote those and I would refer you to the police chief to be a better person to talk to you about that. But as far as the occupants, they're a typical resident renter, whether they were renting a single family home or whether they're renting the ADU in that regard.
Appreciate it. So ultimately, what you're telling me here is this document is set up to allow process to start, but the planning board after that. And once they made, once you've made your ruling, has nothing more to do with this permit. This permit is then granted and there's no revoking of?
Not that there's no revoking of it necessarily, but there are times. So as an example, we had an approved accessory dwelling unit in a house that last year sold to a new owner. And the new owner was not a full time resident. They bought it as a, they planned to live here when they retire in a few years, but right now they're part time. And so in our correspondence with them, we educated them on the rules that are required for the unit that they bought. And unfortunately, they had to remove the accessory dwelling. So in essence, the permit was revoked because they no longer met all of the standards that are required in the zoning ordinance. So it's not to say something can never be revoked once it's in there. If you don't continue to meet these, you can't just add another bedroom without approval and building permit. You know, typically some project would require a building permit and that would be the tipping point where we would then look at whether or not they were still meeting their original approvals, whether there was a new process that needed to be followed, or whether it no longer could be operated.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. But ultimately, it seems to come back to, you seem to understand what the rules are. The document doesn't explain it to me. I'm just an English citizen here trying to read it and understand the rules. And it seems to me that you and the planning board can figure it all out, but I don't, I don't see what it is. And ultimately, if I did have an issue, if there were complaints or there was complaints upon my health department or something like that, there doesn't seem to be anything in the document that explains the process by which this could be revoked, what the consequences revoked, how long it's going to be. So until those five W's are answered, it seems like this document is not quite complete. Appreciate it.
Yep. So there's an enforcement section at the end of the zoning ordinance that speaks to all of those pieces. And I would just say, you know, there's always town staff, myself, the town administrator, others in the office that are available to help, you know, a lot of the documents that, that exist in government are not necessarily easy for people to just pick up and understand. So we're, you know, we certainly always are willing to, to help and guide them.
Hey Adam, can I? I think part of the relationship here can be understood better. This is not a subdivision of the property. So another example of someone I think applied in the ADU, putting trash in the yard and things like that. It's the yard of the person that owns the lane. And probably in some way, shape or form, there is a lease between that owner and the occupant of the ADU. And that may govern some obligations, lots of leases, so you got to keep. But were there a problem, whoever was leased the health person? It's going to involve the owner of the property as well as the person that's occupying the ADU. And I think that relationship is a little bit more complicated than a subdivision. Sorry. Where two separate people and they have to live together. Well, here they get a landlord in essence, and a tenant, and the tenant has to satisfy the landlord. Now, if you say the landlord has trash, I guess the tenant would have something to say about that too.
Thank you. I appreciate your point. But again, this is, I'm thinking of the one bad possibility with large cloud being either the owner, if it wasn't, maybe I missed the point where it said the owner had to be there the whole time. You're assuming it is, you're assuming this, you're assuming that. There's a lot of assumptions here. There's, there could be something that was sort of, I just wanted, you know, all I'm saying is the document isn't a hundred percent clear. It could be written a little clearer, a better explanation. I'm just asking the planning board to look at this and consider maybe there are some things that could be added to this for clarity rather than rush into saying everything's good enough, or this is what we did in 2016 and that's good enough for today. I don't think what we had in 2016 is necessarily good enough. I can't answer that all. But we, we can handle what we have today and now. Why don't we take a look at, think about what we have in this document right now? Is it clear enough? Can we explain everything clean up so that the next planning board, six years from now, doesn't have to say, well, we didn't know what they're trying to watch. So we're just going to make it up. Let's, let's, let's do it right today. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Are there any other questions, John? No, last?
Other John?
First one I saw.
Yeah, I have a question.
John, can you just say your name? I'm recording. John, I'll listen.
On amendment number four, it says short term rental, and I'm reading from this accessory dwelling unit rented for a key for a period of less than ninety days. And the reason I'm asking it over on, I don't know what page it is. The last page, I guess. Last page under accessory dwelling unit, ADU shall, for following, it said ADU shall not be used for short term rentals. Does this mean they can rent for less than ninety days?
No. So it would mean that they cannot rent. Something is not a short term rental if they're renting for ninety days or more, because the definition is defining it as something as ninety days or less. And the unit may not be rented in a manner that is a short term rental. So the definition there would be eighty nine days or less.
So what's written in red here, you cannot, you cannot rent for less than ninety days?
Not rent for less than eighty nine days.
It says ninety here. I'm just reading.
Ninety or less, or less than ninety, it says.
Right. The next question, how many existing ADUs have been built since 2016? Either D and U's or A and U's?
So we don't currently allow detached ADUs. So zero. And attached, I believe the number is fourteen.
We, we are fourteen existed.
Yeah. Not to say that there were not, there've, between 2016 and now, while there was a conditional use permit process in place, it was fourteen. There are others that existed prior to that. And there are others that even existed prior to ADU being a adopted form in the zoning ordinance.
Right, which would not be part of that fourteen, is that?
Correct.
Fourteen since 2016.
Right. So in the event, one of those non-registered fourteen wants to add a detached, is there an issue for them?
Non-registered.
Could be.
Can you say that again, John? I just want to show it clear.
Yep. If you have a attached ADU, but it's not registered, excluding a fourteen that you're aware of, and I come to you and I say, I want to build a detached, because your ordinance, it used to say and/or, now it says or, am I still allowed to put a detached in?
I don't believe so. You wouldn't be conforming to this. You'd be legally non-conforming with what you say, you know, you built and attached in nineteen ninety-two. I don't believe we would then allow you to build a detached, just as we wouldn't have allowed them to come and build a second attached in the last decade.
Okay. And that, and I guess that's when I imply that would happen. Then the the other thing I was really good, the ADU shall have a separate nine one one address. So that includes the ADU, the attached, has to have a separate nine one one address.
Correct.
And the detached has to have a separate nine one one.
All, all individual dwellings and offices to have to have individual addresses. And there are actually state regulations on that. So someone in our office is certified through, I think it's actually through the Homeland Security Division to actually assign numbers. So your house number is actually tied to your location on side of street and feet between the driveway or the entrance and the intersection. And there's specific maps that tell you which one of the intersections. So if there's two roads equal distance from your driveway, which one of those is where your street number is measured from. And so that's really something that is baked into state law for, you know, nine one one already.
Right. So the existing fourteen that you are aware of, they all have separate nine one one addresses?
They should.
Sure.
I'm not the one that issues those addresses, John, so I don't, can't speak definitively. However, when someone comes through for a building permit to do the, the work required to actually construct the ADU, Cara in our office is a land use and assessing coordinator who is who does the, like the filing of the building permit into the parcel files. She then, she's the number assigner. And so she reaches out to them. There's forms that they get when they pick up the building permit. And then she follows up with them to make sure that the unit is actually constructed, because obviously they don't assign numbers if someone does not follow through with the building permit.
Right. By, no, last thing. By definition, when you say ADU, you're referring to either the attached or the detached. Is that correct?
Yep.
Even though it doesn't say so, it just says ADU.
Right, just accessory, John, in general.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, John. John, did you want to talk? And then you start the second.
Great, John. Only Johns get public commentary.
Hi, John Wilson. A few thanks. First of all, it seems like maybe two ADUs a year is a high number. And because of that, and because we can't make changes tonight, we have the ability of not putting these things through and holding off for a year. I think there are two things that have been brought up. Well, one thing has been brought up so far tonight, and that is the being able to have a trailer as a detached unit. I don't think should the town be happy with that. And I don't see why we couldn't hold off for a year and insert that into the regulation. The other thing is I spoke at the last meeting about the shoreline protection area as far as detached units were concerned. And my concern about that and the lakes association's concerns. Cyanobacteria is a huge thing now. And unpleasant Lake where we have excellent water quality according to water testing, we've had two ounces cyanobacteria. Like some of these have repeated ones. They have good quality water too. And I'm quite sure where this is coming from, but the difference between what you get in testing water and water test and what you get with phosphorus loading of a lake where it gets stuck in the, the bottom of the lake and the stomach and so forth that's down there, seems to be very important right now. Cobi is now doing a study in Pleasant Lake as far as phosphorus floating is concerned. We are very concerned if we're having a problem like this when we have such spectacular water quality results. The state is very interested in this and they have just completed a, a study of what's causing the cyanobacteria and phosphorus loading. And a legislature convened a seventeen experts to review this. And their study is being made public a week from tomorrow. And because of that, I am very concerned that you're going to allow these detached units on the lake, even though they passed the so-called septic engineering and other requirements from the state. I think there's aspects of this that we don't understand. And because there's such a low demand right now for accessory dwelling units, I'd like to see us hold off for a year and get this right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Just on, then?
Yeah.
My name's Michael Ball. I wanted to make a few comments based upon the last meeting we attended. I had an average. The first thing I should do is recognize and acknowledge the deliberative work of the members of the planning board as well as that of other town committees. I know from personal experience, it's the sorry nature of such work, that it's routinely conducted outside of public focus and recognition, knowing what it encounters some level of criticism is when you hear it from the public. It, it is the nature of these processes. Repentably, I come here with some criticism with regard to the amendment, but also hope to offer some acceptable approaches. Though I recognize as Adam has outlined, there's little of anything I'm going to say tonight that's going to change the process that's already in the way. But it's my catharsis to at least tell you my thoughts. And as I understand it, I will preface every comment I'm going to make on that limited amount of time I've had to look at the amendments and to understand them in full context. But as I understand it, the ordinance presents itself as a partial response and potential solution to a need to expand inventory workforce in affordable housing in New London. And I agree that there is an admitted need, though the actual level of the need in excess of current projected issues is still unclear, at least in my mind. Furthermore, while there are a variety of possible responses to this need, once it can be quantified, I fear that this amendment is not one of them and could potentially lead to significant negative, though unintended, consequences. The proposal submitted as matter of property specific or incremental, two qualities that I think are worthy further thought and consideration. Taken into its potential for townwide implementation, this change could authorize the, as of right, the effect of the subdivision of every single family property would be limited only by the characteristics of the existing home and parcel. While the subdivision I speak of, as you pointed out, sir, would not be a legal division of one parcel to two, it would nonetheless permit the creation of a separate residential building on a property which previously held only one, changing the character of the original property and quite likely the neighborhood. Any property in any neighborhood which could fit an additional single family residence would be authorized to develop an additional one thousand two hundred and fifty square foot house plus a preserved two car garage, attendant patios and decks, without regard to its acceptability to adjoining property owners, the character of the neighborhood, but perhaps the best interests of the town. Furthermore, the size and affordability proposed standalone ADU developments seems an inappropriate economic answer to the need that has been articulated. And such a structure would easily cost, and was pointed out at the last meeting, somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. And that's a, that's a real one. It produces a three hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty thousand dollar building. This mismatch between the economics, need and cost, new skin building structure raises the perspective of alternative ADU, ADU projects, such as modular factory built units, manufacturer house, tiny houses. Tiny houses, the pure generated three D structures, all of which could negatively impact. Not only the aesthetic character but also value of residences, what in speakers. This townwide release valuable historic gardens in their controls. Seems ripe for abuse and misapplication, though I admit unintended. We heard in the prior public session that planning board members place great reliance on the response it's committed in an earlier survey question. The survey questions and their answers may well have indicated sympathy with the need for affordable workforce Hudson. I suspect that those sympathies are legitimate, well-intended, and still exist. However, I do not believe that the interpretation of the survey responses constituted a new mandate this board. The conduct and deliberations of planning board, I assume that the board should reaffirm its mandate to preserve. Forced power zone of the town, to consider any expansion or addition of attachment or detached A D U. Only in response to demonstrated hardship by current property owners. And in further subject, the formal notice is scrutiny by adjoining property owners as well as consistency with the previously expressed mandate. To maintain a rural character and current visual attributes. So I said, this is my catharsis. Thank you for listening. Appreciate your work.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other questions or comments?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Ron Rocco. I'm a resident of Pumka Road. I'm here with my wife, Mary. And um also speaking on behalf of my neighbors, the Ruggles, who live across the street from me in Pumka Road, who can't be here tonight. Um, I had emailed some comments to board uh prior to the uh, for the prior meeting that unfortunately wasn't able to attend. But I did want to just address a couple of things uh with, with the change in the uh, in the proposed ordinance or amendment. Uh, first of all, I appreciate the fact that we did change from the A to the O. I think that was a very important change. But I still remain concerned about the detached, allowing detached structures. And then also the increase in size of the A D U's. And I think a lot of my concerns are really reflected in section E of the existing ordinance. And a couple of things in there, I mean, first of all, number two, we do have uh subsection two above E. We do have the prohibition on subdividing, selling it separately, and that's all very important. But it's also modified by language that I find scary, which says, to the fullest extent permitted by law. And I'm just wondering, to what extent does the town have the ability to enforce that? And I mean, do we have case law? Do we have any legal research? What, what happens with one of these? And so Adam, you've mentioned the, I guess, the good story, the good anecdote about a property owner who cooperated. But there's a lot of property owners that won't, and uh, I'm just concerned what would happen in that type of circumstance.
So that specific um reference, Ron, um is referencing the actual RSA for A D U's. Which gives the town the power to um say that it's not subdivisible. Um, so my interpretation of that is that's speaking to the extent of the law being the RSA that governs this specific section. Um for municipalities to restrict A D U's. Um and there is a specific portion in that RSA that speaks to um whether or not a town um has the authority to restrict from further subdivision.
So it just to, to then go on to my, what my question really is, is if somebody does, and we, we're going to. When we have just attached A D U's, that's one thing, but now that we have detached ones, there could be a lot more. Of an economic temptation for somebody to try to maybe subdivide or make it a condo or whatnot. In the circumstance that that happened, what would the remedies be for the town?
So they really could never get to the point of it being subdivided, so um in order for something to be subdivided, you have to um record that subdivision. At the county registry of deeds and those recordings need the signatures of the planning board before the. Um county register would actually take that recording, they get rejected. You should sometimes the ones that are signed get rejected because there's something in the wrong spot. Um, so it shouldn't be, if someone illegally subdivides, um then there's recourse for that. There are a couple of examples in case law of when illegal subdivisions have happened. Um, but I think that in this scenario, that would be a very difficult thing to do. Um, you would have to have the approved subdivision plan from this planning board um with the chair's signature. Um and be recorded. If somebody put out an advertisement, you know, not all real estate ads are always um one hundred percent accurate. Um, you know, we do pay attention to what's on the market right now. Um, so if somebody put out an advertisement um and said, you know. Two-bedroom condo for sale, um you know, subject to subdivision, you'll see that sometimes in the end of a real estate listing. Um, if we know that that's not possible, we reach out to the um, the agent typically. And say, you know, we see you have this listing, you understand that that subdivision is not approvable. So, is that answer more or less?
It does, although I, I still think that I, I still remain concerned with, again, with the detached funds. That, you know, we are creating something that is just gonna be a lot more tempting to do that.
I should clarify, so if, so say you're in the um, the R two zone and you have four acres. And you build your detached accessory dwelling unit. Um, far enough away from your house, a lot line could be put in between the main house and the A D U. And both structures would meet setbacks and they both meet the minimum lot acreage and they both have the road frontage um that's required in the zone. Hundred and fifty, um and that's case, then the planning board could subdivide that, they'd become two single-family homes. Um, just like that property owner could have just subdivided the land to start and then built a single-family home. Uh, but they would have to meet all.
Say, started out as A D U, because you, you can do the detached A D U as a right, right, in, under the ordinance.
No, a, as of right would mean that you can do that by um, you know, just filing your building permit to build it. Um, there's a conditional use permit process that it's allowed by C P. Um, so. Yeah, I think that's.
And I'm, I'm, I'm. So the, the reality of what Adam just said is that. On a, on a parcel that's large enough to have two residences, it could be subdivided, have two residences. Whether or not that second residence was both as needed, then it was subdivided, or was subdivided and then the rest was built. So the density doesn't change, the build-up doesn't change. Typically, though, an accessory dwelling unit is sought because the dent, it's a, it's an allowable density increase on a parcel. That doesn't have the acreage, which really means, so you tried to subdivide it, they failed immediately. Because a lot is already not large enough to be subdivided, probably would not make it past. And in theory, they've already even got to add. Somebody would come and say, I want to subdivide this property, how would I fill out this application? Instantly, you could say. Well, it's a two-way minimum, you have to make her that out. It's not going to happen. So, the, the reality of it. Very different than the language of it.
And I will just add to run the conveyance of an illegally subdivided parcel or unit or whatever. Um, there's pretty steep state penalties for that. Um, and actually, the town of Wilmette years ago worked through a. A parcel that was illegally conveyed um more than twenty years ago, um and essentially it was uh. Got subdivision approval, but there were conditions put on the subdivision that were never met, and so it never should have been filed, but the um. Uh, money changed hands and a couple of years after, uh someone realizing that their tax bill didn't reflect the additional land that they had paid for. Um, came to the office and uh, you know, there are pretty substantial penalties that then the person who knowingly. Sold an illegally subdivided lot.
Um, I remain also concerned, and I mentioned this in my earlier email about uh the short-term rentals. I, I appreciate the fact that we've added a definition there, but I, I still think that realistically, if we do get more of these. Um, we're a small town, we don't have a code enforcement function. You know, it's, it's just gonna be really difficult to track, and I think one of the earlier speakers talked about neighbor versus neighbor and that type of thing. And I think that's what we're really talking about there, and I, I just think we're looking at a lot more possibility of that with detached A D U's. Versus what we've got now. And then finally, the, the increase in size from a thousand to twelve hundred and fifty square feet, that's a twenty-five percent increase, that's significant. Uh, but it even goes further than that because it's uh, we also change it to unfinished living area. Which says to me that that won't include any ground space or basement space or whatnot, so it could actually be. In, an increase of more like fifty percent of what the actual sizes, I mean, somebody could put up potentially a four-car garage with an A D U. Or a three-car garage, and it's not gonna be included in that twelve hundred and fifty square feet of living area. So I really think we're, we're changing both the, the square footage and also the definition of square footage in a way that's good and well out for a much larger structure. And I just, again, think that, once we uh go down that road, we're opening ourselves up to uh some temptation. For bad actors to come in and, and bring things into town that we don't want. So I, I guess in, in conclusion, I'll just say that I, I think what the town did in the original A D U uh ordinance was good. I think A D U's are good things, I think it tech, uh, I think uh. Uh, A D U's that are part of the current property are a good thing, but in our original uh ordinance. We did say that uh we wanted to, these units to improve the inventory of smaller housing without significantly altering the rural character of our community. And I feel like some of these things, including the, uh, the detached A D U's and increasing the size. Takes us down a path that isn't consistent with that. And you know, people have cited the master plan survey, I mean, I think the one thing people in town agreed on is wholeheartedly, I think. Ninety-seven and a half percent of us said uh maintaining the rural character is either important or very important. And I just feel like there are elements in this plans and this uh provisions for the A D U's that takes us in the wrong direction, so thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Alright, so I uh, yeah, Steve, really quick, because we had a chance, yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to try to move ahead, thanks.
I think I've got to stay very, very good.
Yeah, we got you. Thanks, Rich.
Steve, back for a second time, I'll be very quick. So I say, at the last meeting, I pointed out. That would be entirely possible to have a do-it-yourself subdivision by simply having a one-hundred-year lease with the right to renew. And there's nothing in that ordinance that would prevent that from happening. Uh, and so it's fine to say that, you know, subdivisions would be a hard thing to accomplish. If you allow a detached A D U on every lot in town, regardless of its, its size. You can create a, a situation by leasing it for a hundred years, rent renewed, triple net. Whatever you have accomplished, everything you would want without a subdivision, thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, so, Jen, please, you wanna make a comment?
Um, I realize that you all have spent a lot of time on this and I have come late to the planning board. And I appreciate what the Housing Commission has put forth as well, but I'm not sure the detached A D U's are going to solve our housing. Issues in London, and I do not support um this one article.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from the board?
So I think we would, yeah, good. Janet, I appreciate that input and. Now, as we work publicly through this, the B D M meeting. There were things proposed. I didn't like, there was things proposed, other people didn't like, things like that. I was standing, some of the hopes we have for some of the projects that are going. There's not a day that I don't walk into store in town, business in town, where they're trying to hire people. We had public forums on housing, where we had a number of major lawyers in town. Seizing us to find a way, make it possible to hire doctors, nurses, uh teachers, professors. And I don't know if this, I think I'm gonna win, but we've also looked and Peter. You know, led the charge at looking at other alternatives that we could try to take to move the needle. And while there are things in this that I have some concern about. I don't think these are gonna be Jeremy's mushrooms. But obviously, in state and this problem, we're never gonna know if it's a problem or if it works, let's try something. And I'm gonna vote for it. I, I understand your, you know, concern. Sure, other people have concerns and things like that, and you know, as I said, if. Everybody had watched the process of cooking through this, there was a lot of debate and. I'm gonna support.
Thanks. But a few other people here, dealing with this since two thousand and sixteen earlier. Um, and having watched it for that long, it's interesting. I think the, the commission put a lot of work into this, I think even fourth is something that was really good. I think the end war, um and you know, the possibility of having two A D U's per, on, on the single property was, was certainly something that was. Presenting a challenge, I think the rest of the changes are actually kind of minimal discussions, but detached A D U's. The thing that really came to my mind was that it actually presents an opportunity to. Remedy one of the oppositions. Secret, but statements about the cost and economics of building this and it not being feasible. Um, the possibility for detached A D U's is actually using existing structures, which would reduce the amount of um. Cost in the garages with an empty space and above it, or the example, there's a lot of those. Um, Adam has, as mentioned in several meetings, how many people come to him and say, I have this structure. Why can't I have a quote-unquote gravy flat up above the garage? So I actually see that as, that's, oh, it's addressing that. That sort of comment, but it's actually a plus um on the other side. Um, it's also a re-reduction in impact on properties that it's an existing structure as opposed to being new. Um, and then a few others, kind of random comments, you know, it's, it's. It's kind of thrown back us that this isn't a solution to workforce and affordable. That actually wasn't what the survey was about, when we were in master planning, it was about diversity in housing. So it doesn't mean that it has to qualify in the, the projects that are being pointed out to the pilots, et cetera. Those are, are other drops in the bucket, as is the A D U. So, you know, I think if you take all of those things together, even the increase in square footage. You know, if you relate that back to the density study that was done in twenty before in our build-out. It's using two-point-five persons per residence, so if you keep that the same, but really not increasing. If you really dig into those numbers, we want them to so far behind the projected growth and build-out. A bad study in ninety-four was twenty, sixty years, it was twenty fifty-four for our full build-out. We have actually been growing at a reduced rate from that, and even with this blueberries, we're still beyond twenty fifty-four. So, while it may seem that two per year doesn't help. With two people that are better than those units per year that are maybe working in our community, or being in a adjacent community, which we also visit, shop in. Participate in, it's healthy. There are a bunch of years that's nice.
Thank you, Jennifer. Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
Yeah, a question for Adam, Adam, a couple of things. Um, here are three, don't you remember, so does each of them give a separate vote from the planning board?
Yeah, that's what we think.
So the, the other, the other two have already happened, though, Joe.
So on this one here, and the board votes in favor to move it forward, will the vote be recorded in the warrant right?
Yes, it'll say, planning board supports, it's unanimous.
Or they're well here, it will not be on the ballot.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks. Okay, so I think it makes sense. We've heard a lot of comments that this meeting and the party means uh. To call for a vote. Is there a motion to move this to the one? So move second. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Some opposed? Any abstention? Okay, thank you.
I just wanna make sure I'm telling, so Paul and Marian, you were in favor?
Yep.
Yeah, opposed. What's Janet? Everyone down there was in favor?
Chairman? Yeah. Um, I'm not gonna make this motion, but I think uh, I will suggest that um. We ask Adam to bring together all of the suggestions that came into this uh. This meeting and the other meetings, and that we have a session at some point. In spring, or we write the next amendments to those zoning rights and see if any of these things. If we consider them, any of these sanctions included in this next year.
Yeah, thanks. I'm taking notes as well, so we can definitely, definitely discuss all these things. Thanks, Paul. Okay, so next up uh, is we have a. Public hearing for accessory dwelling. Do you wanna talk about this one now?
Sure, maybe just say if anyone's gonna leave, exit, make their noise.
Would like to take off now's the time to do it, so we can continue the meeting. Thank you for coming. Alright, so we're gonna talk about a proposed ADU at one thirty-eight Rawlville Road. So again, if you can.
Just really hard for the recording.
It's hard for the recording, so I appreciate people making a speedy exit. Thank you for coming.
Mike, do you want me to start with the floor plan or the pictures or?
Right, whatever, what do you like to, sounds great.
Yeah. So feel free to go ahead and help direct me to scroll if you want me to.
Like Janet and I, our request was approved to finish our basement. Um, it's about seven hundred and fifty square feet. Um, with a one bedroom apartment, eighty year. Um, it's a hunter business, uh, personal family, an aging parent. You know, a relative, uh, but also as a potential uh, local rental option. Um, for us, oh, we would maybe a professional nurse, teacher. Senior retired person. That is our request. Screenshot, thanks Adam, of the, of the floor plan. The basement, it's. You know, the way the land sits and the house sits, nice walkout basement, um, very bright, bright. We just. Got a shot of the, the house up and kind of the back, um. It's the kind of shot of the interior frame of, yeah, that's the side door back of the house. Um, a little stairwell down to the, we were approved for the ADU to the. Door. So when we built the house, it was such a nice, bright walkout basement. Uh, we thought it would be a nice space, you know, for someone, so we kinda had set some things up for a potential ADU.
So as far as department head concerns, um, there were not any. Um, just the typical with the accessory dwelling and the condition for the fire chief to do the walkthrough.
I have a question.
Excuse me.
Um, my understanding is we need a connecting door. Where would that be in your floor?
It, it should be in there unless I, it's a bit of a wrong one.
Right, you know. Oh, it's at the bottom of the stairs, right? It's kind of hard to.
Exactly.
It's a light pencil drawing, so it didn't scan all that well.
Good question, but it's right at the bottom of the stairs. Going into kind of the middle of the living one, the living area.
Well, connecting door.
Oh, there is connecting door, you see, I got.
And that connects.
It opens and goes into the kind of the, the. Living area, so there's right, right about there, kind of a hallway-ish.
Let me rotate and see.
And where does it connect in the house itself?
Oh, uh, into um, the red at the bottom of the stairs coming from the first floor. There's. Kind of a non utility area. The bottom of the stairs, I can see that, Michael.
Sorry.
So it's to the left of that first wall, that's.
So you can.
Where our stairwell, stairwell comes down. Uh, from the first floor and right at the bottom of the stairwell, that's where maybe a door going into the ADU.
So the stairwell would not be part of the ADU in terms of the living space?
Correct.
No. Correct, it would not be.
It would not be.
Thank you.
Mike corrected the uh, ADU, the entire basement other than the stairs, or is there some part that you've reserved?
Question, no sir, um, so there's two utility areas, the utility area, um.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, for the house and then, correct. Utilities, again, it's a little tough to see, but. So that stairwell area and utility areas separate from. Let me, thank you.
Excuse me, it's a little confusing because it has a door that appears to be going into the stairway. So how is the utility space connected to the main house? Do you need to take those stairs? In order to enter the utility room for the main house?
You go down those stairs and then into the, right to the utility room there. Correct.
So essentially, Marian, this is a hallway here where the stairs terminate.
And so you come down the hallway and go into the utility room for the main room, or you continue further and go into the ADU, is that correct?
If you pass through that door, yes.
Okay, I got it.
Correct.
Are there other questions from the board?
Because of our conversation. Um, what have you done about our park and access? I mean, we see these all the time, but usually there's problems.
I mean, I'm flexible, I'm just, I mean, I had proposed a potential spot there, there, look right out to the left. Um, we also had to shed the property to the right, so we could potentially put, you know. A single car parking space there. And then the other alley is kind of going down, that's where that stairwell is. So.
Just show. That's your house number two, sorry, just pull on. I think we should be able to pull up the aerial imagery, but your, your house is new enough that it may not show up on here yet. Uh, no, your house is too new. Next, next year when the update comes in.
Thanks, Adam.
Yep.
This is shed. Oh, this is the shed, so just for general interest, it's, said it's for family use, which is somewhat different.
I guess.
If you were gonna rent it out.
Mm-hmm.
Did you consider that maybe you would have to do something else with our people?
Um, I thought that either at the top of the driveway and kind of rode in, that flew that plan. Um, ADU potential parking or I thought to the left of the shed, I could make a space, but I'm open to.
You know, but you don't have the.
Sorry, don't know why that just crashed. I think the wifi went out for a second, sorry about that. Everything crashed. Um, a- and so I think it is somewhat important to remember that with. ADUs too, we're not necessarily so concerned about. The exact spot that the tenant's car is always going to be parked, but that there is the ability for the tenant to. So the proof of this spot, um, so many, that's something to remember.
Thank you. Uh, are there other, yeah.
That's a quick question. That's a four bedroom septic system, so I'm assuming that the house has three bedrooms existing. Okay, so that's.
And this was a scenario where the um, the initial septic was overbuilt. Um, and so they were able to get updated approvals in their existing septic to accommodate the required. Um, amounts for a one bedroom apartment plus the three bedroom main home. So. I'm sure when their initial septic designer, and I know Mike and I talked about this at one point, but it's been a while, but there was thoughts that the basement would have. Actual bedrooms down there, right? And so they had built it larger.
Right, um, so we actually, um, we submitted, we had a new subject design, design. To accommodate the ADU and we put it on file with the state. So there's the, the original four bedroom septic, I think the original four bedroom was, which is six hundred gallons per day. With the ADU at fifty-six hundred seventy-five, just shy of. Um, so we had a new design, we submitted with the state, it was approved, and that is on file with the state. Should anything ever go wrong and we, where it went.
Are there other questions from the board? Are there questions or comments from the public?
Hi, I'm Steve Nackel, um, I live at one forty-three Rawlville, right across the street. Um, I, I'm looking at the plans, this is one of the ADUs I think was actually a little bit good. Right, it's, it seems like a reasonable setup, a good septic system. And I know the family, you know. Should, should be getting a, a good tenant. All I'm concerned, I would have, of course, is the parking and given the steep grade of the property. Between the house and the street, um, it's gonna limit the area, but that's obviously indicated not gonna be a factor right now. So whether or not the ADU permanent would work from what I understand, but. Overall, uh, as, as a neighbor, I personally have not seen any knowledge that I, I commend this concern. Thank you.
Thanks. Could you say your last name for me while we're at time? I'm sorry, just so I can.
Okay, officially, I'm Dr. Stephen Peckham, P-E-C-K-H-A, one forty-three Rawlville.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments from the public? Anything else from the board? Looking for a motion as of this point?
Uh, I can, sorry, finding a fact, sorry, taking my notes for Trina.
Yeah.
Um, so the finding effect would be that the accessory dwelling unit meets the size requirements. The septic has a properly sized design on file and that the unit is a single bedroom, which is less than two bedroom maximum on books today. Yes, yep, that's, that was the first one, that the ADU meets the size requirement. Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed, standing? Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next up, we have uh, a site plan review for MCHC rentals at two seventy-six Newport Road.
Yes, my. I'm Catherine Super. Um, I just purchased a unit in the gallery on the first floor there. Uh, there's really just, uh, there's basically. Couple of things I wanna do, most of it's cosmetic, painting, upgrading, like pictures, things like that, um. But kind of the two more, I guess, major things that are, that I'm looking to do is I'm looking to move one of the walls back. So I can make the reception meeting area larger. And then the second is to, um, in the treatment rooms add space.
I'm gonna interrupt really quick, uh, on Kapanagros, I forgot to have the condition for, um, the. Fire department to do the inspection, so sorry, well, there's still yours from, make sure that, is everyone who voted in favor, okay? With that being the condition for the fire department to do inspection?
You had mentioned.
Yes, I just wanna make sure we're all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for quite a time.
Proceed, Catherine, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's basically.
Um, so for the board members, the gallery is a planned unit development. It's one of our unique planned unit developments that is for a commercial building and not for a residential purpose. Um, and so this space is over one thousand square feet. Um, so though our site plan review regulations allows an administrative process. For projects like this, this one, there's a single leasable area of less than a thousand square feet, this one is just over. Um, and so here we are for site plan review, um, there are no proposed exterior changes to the gallery property. Um, it is just, as you can see up here on the screen, um, this is the existing floor plan. And then this is the proposed floor plan, so the expansion of the um, reception area, um, then as Catherine mentioned, the um.
Thanks.
Sinks, yes, the countertops and sinks in, in the treatment rooms. So.
Thanks, Adam, for that. Do you wanna do finding effects real quick?
Sure, um, so the finding effect is that the use is staying the same as a professional office space. Um, and so there's no change there for you to review, um, and that there is no change to the exterior. Um, of the gallery proposed, and that this isn't allowed use.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? And what about from the public? Any questions or comments? Okay, so then hearing none, I'll come back to the board, look for a motion.
I move.
Second. Okay, all moved, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed, standing? Thank you, and thanks for sitting through along with me, appreciate it.
Looks good.
Do you want an update? So, um, we have a scheduled meeting on the thirteenth.
Um.
The only two applications that I think we have for the thirteenth. Um, are not time sensitive, um, I don't believe. So, um, knowing that you guys have had a, a pretty long haul from October till now. Um, with four and a half hour meetings and almost weekly at one point. Um, I am willing to ask all the applicants if they'd be able to wait two weeks to our second February meeting. If you thought having, um, a night off on the thirteenth would be enjoyable. It's a lot, a voluntary lot merger and a sign for the college are the two things we got in. Neither one is in a rush, um, and they would be willing, I think, to wait two weeks.
I could, I could bear not having.
Okay, alright. So I will reach out to both, today was the deadline, so we really couldn't reach out to people until we saw what came in this afternoon at four o'clock. Um, so I will reach out and confirm with both, although they have both told us previously, you know, get us someone you can, so.
So I'll let Bill know this.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send you all an email to confirm, um, once I've talked to the two applicants. If God forbid, one of them wasn't available the second night in February, we might have to, um, you know, accommodate, but.
Bill will be back.
You've missed us. Um, so anyways, stay tuned to your email, um, and I think that. Is it, trying to think of any other town updates, um, budget committee is nearing the completion of their work. Um, there will be another meeting tomorrow night at Whipple Hall where they will go through. I guess the final transfers to capital reserves and I believe start to actually take budget. department budgets, one on, one by one, to then, hopefully, they have not pinned down their public hearing for the budget yet, but first week of February is the target. And then I guess if theirs didn't match yours, when does that happen?
Then we have a budget reconciliation.
And is that before the public hearing for the budget?
Um, probably.
Okay.
We may not need a reconciliation meeting when they agree with us.
Yep. So stay tuned.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And, and hopefully the budget committee is not having another Friday night meeting. So I know that you all missed out on that fun last week, but Janet and I were there until eight o'clock.
Well, they did, well, they have their meeting on our meeting, or is it too far, maybe they were switching and not having, couldn't use that time, or is that too late?
Uh, that could actually be an option for them. I think the fifteenth is their requirement, I think. But yeah, that's actually, that's a good point because I think it's becoming a little bit of a scheduling nightmare for budget committee member schedules, so. Anyways, I think that's the update from around the town office.
No, we from the Housing Commission's here, but I think we should officially thank them. Yeah, I did, I was, I thought of that one, but I, and I did say, I think in the last meeting, thank them, but yeah, just so it's on the minutes, we do appreciate the hard work with the Housing Commission, it's all.
I did say that.
So last.
But in addition, the, the, yeah, the Housing Commission, a lot of, a lot of work, as Paul pointed out as well, so thank you. I don't think we have any other announcements. I appreciate everybody's hard work these last few meetings. I know this has been tough stuff and not always easy and long, so I appreciate it. But Janet, thank you for coming to sit in with us. Appreciate it. And, yeah, and we did it tonight on a primary night, so that's, although I just saw that Trump won the, you know, your primary, so.
Really?
Should I stop reporting? Is there, is that a motion to adjourn?
Yes, so now I'm saying motion to adjourn. We should do adjourn. Thank you.